Well, welcome everybody to the Monday, November 28th, 2011 meeting of the Bradmore Planning Commission. I think we call this meeting to order. Just an agenda review. Our big items tonight are, we're going to discuss the Municipal Facilities and Services chapter of the town plan. And then we're going to have a discussion about economic development. And then we'll have all the rest of our regular things that we do. Anything need to be added to this agenda? Okay. First item is to approve the minutes of November 24th. Is there a motion?
I move. Minutes be approved.
Second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yeah.
It says that the joint meeting with DRB postponed to 12/5/7. Did it say, is that, is our meeting still done? And is it, where does it fit in that agenda?
No.
It's not still then?
No. That's going to be under other business.
Okay.
But we will be talking about that.
So, do we need to change that?
What other bit, change that in the minutes? Well, when, when these minutes are from, that's what it was, so.
Yeah.
You can't alter history, Joe.
That's right.
Any other discussion?
Just, I'm wondering if, as an addendum at the end, that, just for the record, we need to note that the November, a meeting earlier in November was canceled. And, and I just wondered, for the sake of the record, if we just need to have a note at the bottom of these minutes that that happened. Because it was technically initially in our schedule to meet. And just do it.
That would be helpful.
I think if someone's looking back in the future, I mean, because...
Why don't we put that in today's minutes?
Wouldn't that be part of today's minutes?
Yeah.
Because it couldn't have been part of that day's minutes, technically.
No, no, that's right. You're right.
Because you can't rewrite history, right?
There you go.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
All right. So then, the only thing I'd like to just add to, on page two, the very last bullet, Mr. Chapman encouraged the planning commission to revisit floodwater erosion hazard regulations, noting that there is a vacuuming policy to prevent flood-prone areas from suffering future damage.
Page three?
Yeah, the three, I'm sorry. For the most vulnerable individuals. And, which was what he said. But I also would like it just to say, because what he did is he encouraged the planning commission to bring it up now, and that he would support us. And I think that's just important, again, there for the record. Just to add that in. He was, in fact, he was very emphatic about the "now" part.
So, could we have that added to the minutes, please?
Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion?
No, they were well, I think they were well done, again.
Another job well done by Julia. Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, the minutes pass. As written with that one amendment. I think what it was is he threw down the gauntlet. Wasn't that what it was?
He did, indeed.
Yes.
Chivalry is not dead.
Gauntlets aren't dead.
Yeah. Gauntlets are, gauntlet with the wind. Okay. Announcements. So here's that place, where we talk about the joint DRB meeting. And probably, everybody knows that the, or may not know, that the DRB is going to be hearing the Housing Authority matters at their, at the meeting that we were going to have with them. And so it'll be quite a busy meeting, and probably a long meeting, possibly a long meeting. So, we have discussed pushing our joint meeting into January, if that works for the DRB. So, so is there, you guys feel like that's, that'll be a good time? Is that a good time for everybody? It'll be January 2nd, I think, will be the date.
Gary, the email that Tim sent out, I thought he wanted to discuss a date in the beginning of January, not to do it January 2nd.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, yeah.
You're suggesting...
And what I wrote back to him was, you know, about the corresponding, I just said, we would, we would see if we had a date.
What day of the week is that? Is that a Monday?
Yeah. Yeah. It would be the corresponding one to the last two that we were going to, but in January, so. Well, it's, this is a non-binding referendum right now, so, but, but we'll, we'll work it out.
Yeah. They were also, I watched one of their meetings on TV, and they're actually wanting to do a little research and bring a little info to us on subdivision regs, so maybe, I don't know, but whether the day of the meeting influences that or not because of their busy schedule.
Yeah. I think January 2nd's kind of a hard date to prepare for.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would agree. I, I don't project it to be...
And there are five Mondays in January, so.
Well, there must be one that's good, right? Besides that one.
I would rank that as worse.
Okay.
Just because there's so many other things that are going on, like first day of, it's literally the first business day of the year. There are just a lot of things that a lot of people are doing.
So that would be your last choice. One, two, one, two.
If we're making such rankings, yes.
Yeah, I don't think the second is particularly...
All right. Well, we'll say of the five Mondays in January, actually, one of them is not...
This is the fifth one to choose.
Yeah. Although, one of them is a holiday, too, so that would be fifth, and then...
Australia Day, the 26th.
Pardon?
Australia Day. It's a big, it's a big day.
Is that Australia Day?
The 26th is Australia Day.
Fabulous.
Is that like Thanksgiving or Port-au-Prince?
Pretty much take the whole month, actually.
Everybody dresses up as Tasmanian devils.
No, they're just having their clothes on all over the beach.
So we won't see you on that day.
Okay, well, it won't be that day.
It won't be that day.
So we'll have to pick one of the other three.
Either we'll see, or we'll see too much of you.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we'll figure it out.
And so I guess this would be the place, then, to also add in that the November 14th meeting of the planning commission was, was canceled, and just so it shows up in the record, right?
Yeah, let's not make it an announcement, though. It makes us seem behind the times, you know?
A note.
I'd like to announce that the last meeting that we had was not held. Will never be held. Okay.
Wherever you want to put it.
So just to get it in the record, we did not meet...
It'll never be held.
On our last scheduled date of meeting, which was, would have been the 14th of November.
Oh, interesting. Curvy minds.
Just for the record. Okay, the second announcement is the AARP Livable Communities Grant.
I just wanted to report that that was held on November 1st. I thought there was great attendance and good participation. We expect to receive a report from Dan Burden and his colleague. We haven't received it yet. I do have copies of the PowerPoint presentations that he had shown at the meeting, so. Got mostly positive comments, so.
Yeah.
And it pertained to the Canal Street.
Yeah. But with the concepts being transferable around town, too, so. So I think we should be getting a report that has like a 110-day implementation plan.
Yeah, I was going to ask about next steps.
Yep.
Okay.
So, and when we get that report, we'll have next steps, but I think the report might be useful for the town plan as well, so as soon as we receive it, I will distribute it.
Wednesday, one of the 110 days.
It's going to have to be when we get it.
Yeah.
Yeah, really. That's good.
Well, I thought it was a great, I went to the night one, not the day one, but I thought it was great, and really was very useful to see, especially seeing pictures of places that have done things, and, you know, it was really, I thought, great, great, well done. And thanks for everybody for doing that during the day. That was, that was good, really good to be out on, onsite. I wish I'd have been there, but looked like you had a lot of fun. Anything else about that? Anybody?
I thought, I thought it was, I thought it was excellent, too. I really liked that there's a 100-day plan to actually do something within 10 days.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. How about the planning conference up north? Anybody want to talk about that? Who went? You guys go, and this?
I went. Joe went.
I must've.
Sue and I.
How was that?
Good. Well, I learned things.
Yeah.
I learned that we had adopted, effective October 1st, the Residential Energy Building Code there. I didn't realize it stated it up to that, and that everything, even down to a minor residential renovation, needs to comply with that.
Huh.
I think they're that strict, the residential stuff.
Well, there's, there's no enforcement procedures.
Very, very strict about the idea.
Right.
Not strict about the enforcement, huh?
Okay, everyone take note.
Yeah, really, up there. So did they get, do you have copies of, did they actually toss out copies of that?
Yeah, yeah.
Is it many, many pages? Or could we...
Yeah, it's a booklet.
It's a booklet.
Oh, it's a booklet.
Yeah. We can see what we can lend one.
I'm sure you can get one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll lend them out. It'd be nice to see.
I may have picked up some extras.
It's an insomniac's dream.
Yes, that's right.
Just shred it and use it for installation. Would you like to take one of each?
Sure. Actually, the book is kind of helpful.
Yeah. I thought it was.
Yeah, I would bet it would be.
Well, I've spoken with somebody from Efficiency Vermont about it, you know, of course, they take it very seriously, and this was in the context of somebody making an improvement, or actually having built a house. He had to follow certain, you know, all different things. And so, I said, so what if he doesn't do that? And the guy said, well, thank you. You know, he said that, that ultimately, when he goes to sell the house...
It'll be a deed issue.
Yeah.
Right away.
It'll be a deed issue, yeah, so.
So this is if you do any upgrade, or addition, or rebuild, or anything, basically?
Yeah, basically, anything.
You know, a lot of the things they're proposing are, it's in people's best interest to do it. I mean, they're going to, well, I don't know what the payback is, but it seems like some of it's kind of a no-brainer.
Is it required at every transfer of sale, or only if you're doing an upgrade, addition, et cetera? Does every house have to meet these standards, or only new...
New construction.
New stuff?
Yeah, new stuff.
I recall it not being a title issue. You're required to have the affidavit or whatever put into the land use records, but I think they had determined that it wasn't going to hold up titles on properties.
It doesn't have the same weight as the waste, the wastewater permit, and zoning permit.
Huh.
So, it wouldn't hold up a sale.
Now, it could be that somebody from Efficiency Vermont would play, you know, he may have, I won't say played up a particular thing, but I, he talked about it being a finance and, you know, mortgage kind of issue. And I, and I don't know, I don't know the specifics of it, so. He was very serious about it.
Well, I'll, I'll make copies of the materials that are easily copyable. I don't recall that that was the case. I do recall them talking about enforcement really being an issue, and they're trying to figure out how they can improve enforcement, and all the ideas they seem to come up with impacted towns.
Yeah.
You know, like, well, let's require that be filed as part of a certificate of occupancy, and let's require building inspections, and all these things. So I think that'll be interesting to see, how it plays out.
In the end, it's sort of this circular conundrum with regulation that the state has in general, like it does with guns and other things. So, you don't have to be a licensed contractor, and you don't necessarily have to be insured. If you're not an insured contractor, you're exposing yourself to some degree of risk, which could be difficult, but it's your choice. So, right now, the so-called contractors are self-certifying that they've done the right thing, and that it meets the code. But absent anyone checking their work, or checking their, their, you know, whether there's any complaints or criticisms of their work that would reflect on their ability to be relicensed, there are not too many tools left to figure out whether people are doing the right thing or not. So, right now, you have unlicensed workers self-reporting that they've done it the way they're supposed to do it, knowing that really there's no downside to, you know, there's no way that they can be caught for, which is to imply that that's the look to do. And I think in Vermont, it's customary to think that people don't, don't have bad motives, so, but they're...
We don't.
Right?
We don't.
But...
We just don't.
So, I think, also with the state legislature, they can't get, they can't get regulations passed that impose either more costs on towns, or would substantially expand regional government, or state, state bureaucracy. So, they're stuck.
Yeah.
Because if it's not going to be the towns, it would have to be somebody regionally doing it, or at the state level, and the state infrastructure is just not, it's not there.
So the energy code just doesn't have the same teeth as the RRP code does, right?
I don't think there's too much code around land development or construction that does have a whole, I mean, life safety stuff to do with, with fire marshals is, is okay, but everything else, apart from zoning, gets pretty, pretty wiggly pretty fast.
You know, I think one of the things that, this particular customer of ours that we were working on his house, he needed to have outside air put into the fireplaces, and...
Right.
And I think maybe he was needing the last few things to get a, is it a $3,000, some kind of a payment for...
Yeah.
It's a certification.
For energy star?
It's what was part of that, for energy star certification, right?
Yeah.
It's only certain contractors that can give that.
Yeah.
And it's supposed to give breaks on homeowners, or sometimes financing, depending on...
A quarter percent or something. Yeah, something.
But I found everything that we talked about that day did have that same sort of circular state law recommended. Wouldn't it be nice, but no enforcement?
Yeah.
They were just rolling them out, all day.
Well, if we had a zoning officer, then we would actually have to enforce this one, right?
Well, I think what they were saying was, in places where they do, it's more relevant.
Right.
Building inspection.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Right.
Compliance officer, whatever.
You know, there's not too much of a month that's actually subject to that.
Who is? Is Burlington?
Burlington, Rutland...
Rutland.
Bennington?
Bennington is, St. Albans, Olympia.
Huh.
They're actually holding a series of conferences right now, or workshops, I don't know what they're calling them, to inform people about the code changes and updates. They're happening every two weeks. I went to one in Rutland about two weeks ago. And it was interesting, because they, like, well, here's all the new stuff that we're going to be enforcing, but we, we didn't really build in a grace period, so projects that are, this was mostly, it wasn't residential, it was commercial. I was actually under the impression that residential, you really couldn't enforce it, single-family, two-family.
One or two family dwellings, it's correct.
What, three-family?
One or two.
Is it three-story, maybe? I don't remember what that was. Anyway, they, they didn't really build in a grace period, so they're still trying to figure it out. And I think for the first couple of months, they'll be a little bit lax, maybe more informative than they will be enforcing, but...
Educational.
Yeah. Yeah. But the handbook is pretty helpful, for the most part. I think you can go to Department of Energy's website in Vermont, and see all the list of the workshops, if anyone's interested.
And the book is actually online, and when I was there, I tried to get more copies from them, they didn't have any more there, but they said we could request them from them, of their yellow handbook, and that they would send us some.
Okay.
Check it out, too.
Good.
Any other comments on the workshop?
Well, just, they said that that energy, the new energy code was something that they developed in response to receipt of federal TARP money.
TARP money?
And without any enforcement, I wondered whether they had to give the money back. They said, no, it's already spent.
It would be rude to ask.
But of course I asked.
Well, if you were in Massachusetts, they would have spent all the money on enforcement.
Ouch.
That's interesting. Yeah, so, they talked about the state energy plan, and if you haven't seen it, I think they're accepting comments like, you know, December 1st. I think that was the date.
Right.
And then they hope to, like, churn them out, and like, December 15th, have the new energy plan, or the final.
Just like that?
Yeah. It's supposed to be a very quick turnaround, and...
And it's pretty ambitious.
Some issues are concerned.
Very ambitious, yes.
And the, yeah, some of the key concerns include that for northwestern Vermont, they would probably call western Vermont, but I think it really ends at maybe Middlebury or, or maybe Rutland. The natural gas supply line is a key element to the energy plan. Some people are reacting to that negatively, saying it's still a fossil fuel, and so while it's got less greenhouse gases associated with it than fuel oil and, and other fossil fuels, it's still a fossil fuel. And then, it shows extremely ambitious goals for getting large-scale wind energy projects online, fast enough so that you would affect the figures, you know, through the implementation of the plan, and a switch, you know, a very dominant role for hydroelectricity. So...
What's the time span of the plan?
It's supposed to run...
Is it 2030?
To 2030.
It's 2030.
2030. And so then the other part about this is that there is no apparent calculation for the increased demand for electricity that would come from using electricity to charge motor vehicles more. Or a system for ensuring that people could access recharging, you know, charging stations wherever they needed to go, but that electric, electric vehicles are a key component of the greenhouse gas, greenhouse gas, gas reduction. And so there's some pretty basic math problems in there. If you look at states such as California, or Washington State, that have made much, if you've been at this a lot longer for their own set of reasons, they haven't made, you know, their annual, or, you know, five-yearly progress is really slow compared to the targets that are set for Vermont.
Wow. Well, it was similar to our own discussion about the energy plan, and that the transportation is where it all falls apart, because people drive their cars. But the state's pinning its hopes on hydroelectric power to an incredible degree.
Right. And then people switching from their current fleet to, not even, not even hybrids, but, you know, the kind of Nissan Leaf level, you know, the plug-in, the plug-in kind of vehicle, which is a pretty dramatic shift.
So it's hydrocoback is what they're...
Yeah.
We're banking on, we're banking on?
Yep.
Was there much talk about the CVPPS, and, you know, the whole merger and all that stuff, or...
There was no discussion.
They kind of wanted not to talk about that, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess it's pending, and probably a lot of...
Yeah. I'm not sure what the state's disposition is, I just, I don't know.
At the smart meter discussion, the gentleman down there who was the COO of Green Mountain Power, said that he, he made it sound like it was imminent, that they were definitely moving forward towards a merger. And one interesting thing, somewhat related to what you just said there, I didn't realize, but he said that without the smart grid and the smart meter system, that the maximum amount of homes with renewable energy that the grid could sustain as it is, is about 20 percent. In other words, a neighborhood of 200 homes, only about 40 of them could have solar arrays that were, on net metering systems, and it would cap at that.
Wow.
Which, well, I thought, I find that stunning, because I thought in an ideal scenario, we'd want everyone to have, you know, a solar net metering system. But he said, without the grid, without the smart grid, they could only do about 20 percent. But with the smart meters and the smart grid, they could go up to about 75 percent, but yet still cap at 75 percent. They could never have full, the, the, the grid couldn't sustain stability with so many unique, different sources...
Different sources of supply.
Intermittently coming on and off the system at different times.
Right.
That's different.
Well, it'd be pretty chaotic.
That's what, exactly what he said. So many different sources, on-off, on-off, on-off. Clouds here, not there.
Yeah.
Is the smart metering thing still going forward? Because I've been reading things that it's now in question.
Yeah, I think it's in, I think it's in some kind of weird...
Well, they're, they're doing it in Rutland, I think that's, this, we had a program at Rotary, the guy from CB was there, and he went through it, and he said they're installing, they're doing it town, on a town-by-town basis.
Haven't there been some objections over privacy and RF signal cancer issues that have sort of put a kibosh on some things? I don't, I only know what I read from, like, people sending me links to Facebook.
Yeah. I don't know, did, did they say?
That's really good quality.
Well, I mean, there are links to real news, I mean, reformer.com and all.
Oh, what, so what's a bunch of toddlers doing?
Like everybody else.
That presentation will be on BCTV pretty soon, but according to Mike Keever, they were moving, they're moving forward with it. Barring any, you know, court orders or something like that. Now, there certainly is a lot of, there certainly were a lot of people at that meeting expressing similar sentiments to those Facebook posts you're reading, but they were, his, they were adamant about their position that, you know, they're going to happen, and they just got to, and here's all the reasons why.
Okay. Yeah, the, the guy that I heard was saying, he had a schedule, I can't remember, I think it's in the spring, they're supposed to start in Rutland.
Yeah, it's coming here soon, is that?
Right. In a year, they've hired subcontractors to implement the system swiftly, and they still expect it will take a year to put them all in place.
That's, that's quite aggressive.
And it's no problem, no problem if you don't want a meter. No problem. Just an extra $10 a month.
Yeah.
A month. And that fee, and we don't know how long that'll stay at town.
If you get one, or if you don't get one?
If you don't get one.
You can opt out, but you have to pay that.
Right, you can opt out for $10 a month, and that's what the fee, that's what they anticipate the fee will be now.
Okay. Well, that's a lot of announcements, really, but...
It is. It only gives us 20 minutes to discuss municipal facilities.
That could be slotting too long.
Call that all other business.
Well, public, any comments? No, any, any other business I should ask that? Here ain't none, and having no public here, why don't we launch right into the discussion of municipal facilities and services? The, when, when we got together to plan this meeting, we started talking about municipal facilities and services, and I remember the first time around that we talked about it, it seemed like a very, pretty straightforward and fast chapter, and then I think we sort of have been... And then I think we sort of have been, that's, that's, we changed our minds. And, you know, from, you know, the current conditions section of this, you know, there's a lot of daunting challenges in this, in this area. And so I think that's one of the things that's, that's been put in and that, you know, certainly the things that have happened in the last three or four months have, have made an impact and last three or four years have made an impact. And then the other thing that, you know, you see in the, in the policy and actions that are listed here, we, we talked about this, you know, seems like a year ago, but that trying to align or, or figure out how to work on the planning that goes into the capital improvement plan. And, and how to align that with the town plan. And, you know, a lot, there's a lot of issues there, which we, I think we want to spend a fair amount of time talking about tonight. But why don't we, Sue, would you like to just sort of do a little bit of a review of this chapter as it stands now?
Sure. What I really focused on for this draft is setting the context, I guess, that the town government is in right now. Are you looking for something? All right, you got it. Okay. I, I still need to conduct interviews with different department heads, so that's why some of that, that is light. And that's why there's also not a lot of goals and policies because we need to speak to them still. But, but in terms of kind of what's going on with the economics of the town government, I guess there's, or kind of the money that we have available, the quick bullet points are that obviously we haven't had a lot of population growth, and that's been for a long time. And therefore, when the population isn't growing, then the commercial and residential property tax revenues are not growing either. So to, just not growing the, the town revenues that way without population growth. We continue to need to maintain, expand, in some cases, upgrade our infrastructure and utilities, so those are obviously costs. And then when you don't have the growth to help spread out those costs, it's the same, you know, tax base that's gonna be responsible for that. I'm still trying to get figures on infrastructure repairs from tropical storm Irene, but we know that our roads, you know, there's maintenance and there's been bridges, town roads and town bridges that were damaged. So trying to get a grasp on that, and while we will get reimbursement, there is a town share and there's also a state share. So somewhere down the line, that's gonna get passed on to taxpayers. And at the same time, though, we are putting more, we have a separate capital reserve fund, so that's a useful tool to help set aside funds for the town. So we have some information on that that we can share as well. But basically, we don't have, our revenues aren't growing and therefore, we're gonna need to make some hard decisions about the services that we want, either because we need to change them or they're gonna improve livability. And that's kind of the context for this. Can't necessarily be just a wish list of everything that we want. We think that there really needs to be prioritization for the town.
So in the, in the budget that they're currently considering and hashing through and everything, is it your sense or do you guys sense that the costs of the hurricane, are, are they gonna be sort of brought forward fairly clearly in that? I mean, where, there is gonna be some sort of, like, we had to do this, so we can't do that and that sort of thing? Or are we not there yet?
I think at this point, there's not enough information coming back from the state and in turn FEMA to enable people to have a really clear sense of the financial implications of the storm. They've, you know, submitted all the documentation that they had regarding the repairs, the emergency repairs that they've had to undertake. I think that there is still questions around how that's gonna be processed and what their agreed to figure is gonna be in the end. My sense, my rough sense is, and I feel really uncomfortable with saying, but I think that the expectation is that in the FY13 budget, which is what they're working on right now, the expectation is that it would, it could be as high as a couple of hundred thousand dollars. But I'm not sure whether it's split between this financial year, like right now, and next year, or whether that's what they think is gonna end up falling due in FY13.
So how we have afforded that from a cash point of view is far away or taken from the reserve fund or?
The cash, we have a positive cash balance and, and I think that they can manage it mostly that way. And if needed, they can hit the reserve fund, which is a slightly more serious, you know, step to take. But there is room in the reserve fund. That being said, though, you know, there's, there's heightened sensitivity about knowing that things are really tight. And so when it comes to putting together the budget for FY13, the temptation might be to, you know, straddle a year of limited growth in revenues or whatever and maintain a schedule of capital projects by going into the reserve fund again. And so I think, I think in general, there's a sense that they don't want to touch the reserve fund because they don't really know how much they're really gonna need it.
So the sense would be that, that they would scale back projects rather than dip into the reserve?
Push things off to some extent, capital commitments off.
So the budget they're working on right now commences when?
July 1st.
July 1st, 2012?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's the 1213 budget?
Yeah. And we're completing the, you know, we're almost halfway through the FY12 budget.
Okay, all right. One of the things that, under current conditions, that last paragraph on page two, the last sentence is, "The link between municipal services and the property tax rate need to be understood fully by all stakeholders and voters." I think that is a, a key sentence and sentiment. I guess it's hard to see how to do that, you know? When, when, I mean, it seems like it's either tempting or almost not even possible to, for people to state these things in pretty clear terms without, you know, a lot of politics and whatnot getting in there. Because it's, it's the money that people live on or, you know, that things get done, that people have a big stake in and everything. But, you know, every year, the budget committee, you know, gets under, stat, under volunteered for. And, you know, not many people want to do it.
Right. But the committees that want to spend money have lots of a hard time finding people to get on.
It's a, it's a hard one because I think that, that, you know, very few people go through the budget with a, you know, a sharp pencil or whatever, with a lot of questions. And I think, you know, so then it sort of gets left up to maybe a few people that really focus on it or have the time and desire to do that. And, and then, you know, this, it's a hard subject.
It's a very hard subject. There's a couple of things, and maybe this might be a good moment to, to look at those figures around, you know, what, what the debt, what, what is called the debt service plan, which is the commitment that we make in any one budget to pay interest and principal on, on bonds and leases that we have outstanding. And so I think one of the real challenges, and it probably comes up in the economic development chapter even more acutely, but it, it's present right throughout the plan, it's sort of a real important thread right throughout the plan. Bravelboro's had a static or stable, depending on whether you think static is a loaded term, stable population for 100 years. But the age profile now is substantially older than it was or has been in any previous 10-year period. So that's an important kind of transition. So in other words, we had the same population 100 years ago, but the average age was a lot, lot lower than it is now. And so there were more children present, there were more, you know, there was a lot more activity associated with employment and those kinds of things, given the greater percentage of people in the workforce. This is all background or subtext to the fact that the demographic profile, if you like, of Bravelboro has an important bearing on the real estate market and, and other markets for retail activity and labor and a whole bunch of other things. And so over time, what we've seen is commercial property contributes less to the grand list in terms of taxes that are paid now than it has in the past. It's still quite good by comparison to New England as a whole, but the trend is definitely towards residential property taxpayers taking up, taking on a bigger share of the total taxes paid. That again reflects exactly what's going on here, that there are less jobs and there's less economic activity here on any one day. Therefore, also meaning that there's less other kinds of taxes or activity, you know, taxes paid and other activity going on as well. So what this means over time is, is if we established a set of expectations and the infrastructure and services that went with it in 1980, say, then all other things being equal, which they pretty much are, but that shift from commercial to residential and residential property owners aging and their incomes actually going down and more often because of the fixed income nature of older ages, you actually have a smaller pool of people having to make contributions to maintain just the same set of infrastructure. And so you, even though theoretically and in environmental terms and so forth, there's lots to be said for achieving equilibrium, which you might think you've got when you have a static or a stable population, is actually not real equilibrium underneath that, that surface. Underneath actually the ability to fund the, and maintain the existing infrastructure continues to shrink. And so the problem with that is if you cut services or you reduce the number of, or you, or you don't make progress replacing or adding new needed facilities, it becomes less attractive as a destination and as a location for people to live in. You know, core services that people can expect a municipality to provide can be provided somewhere else and people will make those decisions on that basis over time. So we're in that kind of weird crossover point where it's becoming extremely difficult for us to fund what we've got, let alone improve it. And our failure to improve it could have bad implications for our ability to grow.
How much of the, how much of the budget is, mentioned the link between property tax rate by stakeholders? How much of the budget is property taxes versus, sales taxes versus other sources?
The meals and rooms tax, we receive about 66% of the total that is collected and the state holds back 33% for the sake of.
This is the local?
Yep, the local meals and, and board, whatever it is, meals and rooms tax.
Rooms and meals tax, yeah.
Room and meals tax. I can't remember which way it goes around. Anyway, that's about, on average, I, I think over the last couple of years, it's been around $300,000 a year. So that's one source of the general fund. Then that's about it apart from property taxes. There's business personal property tax, which is, Bravelboro's one of the few towns that holds on to that tax in Vermont. What that is, is a tax on equipment. And so it is less and less relevant as more and more businesses depend on less and less actual equipment to do their work. So, and it penalizes large capital intensive businesses on, to some extent, vis a vis other businesses.
How much did you say that part is?
What's that?
Did you say how much you thought that part was?
That's pretty stable. I can't remember the exact amount, stable or shrinking, it's.
Comparable to meals and rooms?
No, nothing like it. I think more like it's not very large.
It's not over 100, is it?
I don't think it's over 100.
And so it's maybe 400 total and the budget's 12 million?
Right. The other thing I, we should probably point out here, when, when we're discussing the budget now, what we're actually discussing is the general fund. And in municipal accounting terms, that's really important because that is the fund where the taxes end up. That's the, if you like, the account that they go into and that's how they're accounted for. But there are two utility, what we call two utility funds or enterprise funds in town. One is an enterprise fund for utilities, which is water and sewer. So that's much more like a subscriber pays system. Everybody who's, everybody who's on the water and sewer system and pays is basically contribute, is contributing. They're paying for what they use and they're making a, their proportional contribution towards the upkeep and maintenance of the system. It's an open question, I think, as to whether there's enough built in there for dramatic, you know, for a significant expansion. So it gets back to that discussion I was just having before. It would, if we were to commit to a large scale expansion of the water or sewer system, we would probably need to look at the funds, you know, the revenues that are charged to users in an effort to build up more reserves to do that. And then the other enterprise fund is the parking fund. And that encompasses the operation of the parking garage as well as the parking system itself. There's some other really kind of minutia stuff about how they're, you know, what kind of audit you do and how they're actually accounted for. But when we're talking about the budget, we're really just talking about the general fund. The other thing that's, I think, important, although most people here are used to it, is that we're not talking about anything to do with schools. So many people would regard school infrastructure as a sort of a key town decision-making role, if you weren't from New England perhaps. And in fact, none of this discussion that we're having here at all has anything to do with the current quality or replace, you know, the replacement or expansion of any of the infrastructure associated with the school system, which is a vital, you know, aspect of, of town life, but it's not part of this discussion.
So part of the, what, what, what are the operating costs of all of these buildings? And is that included in here as far as heat, cooling, electric, all that?
No, that, that you just held up was the capital improvement plan?
So the operating, the operating budget is, you know, it's, it's the, that's the budget for the general, I mean, those, those items are paid for out of the general fund. So the challenge is that, you know, so, you know, I don't, I don't want to sort of spend too much time on this. Right now, we have a reserve fund in FY12 of, around 12% of the general fund. And debt service is currently about 5.6% of the general fund. The debt service includes principal and interest payments on leases and bonds issued in the past. Right now, what we know is that if we keep it, if we don't, if we don't take on any new leases or issue any new bonds, the principal and interest are fixed for the next three years on bonds and leases are, are fixed for the next five years. There's no change in those terms. When I spoke to the finance director, I was trying to get a sense of that gap between what we currently. what we currently are paying. So the debt service that we're currently paying includes the large scale equipment items, such as a grader or a dump truck, which is like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So it's treated as a capital item more than a, more than a vehicle or something because the length of time it lasts and we keep it and the sheer expense of replacing it and buildings and so forth. So the, the sort of ratio between the reserve and the general fund, John O'Connor, the finance director, was saying that he thought that around ten percent would be prudent. So we're doing fairly well in that regard. We're financially stronger than we have been in the past, but just one large project. So that doesn't include the debt service that I just talked about, that five point six percent, that doesn't reflect, for instance, the wastewater treatment plant, because that, that bond is attached to the, to the enterprise fund that operates with utilities. So that's not included on that balance sheet. But as an example, if the proposed police fire facility was approved as a, you know, in the next town, at next town meeting to proceed with that, roughly in terms of what's been identified as necessary, which I think is upwards of over eight million dollars, that would, that would take our debt service right over, just over ten percent, all right?
And ten percent was what?
Ten percent of the general fund.
John O'Connor said was.
And ten percent is regarded as kind of prudent. So you want to sort of stay under that. Now, the reason why I'm playing that out is frequently we'll get, you know, and part of the, for this process, for the planning commission is to actually identify items of infrastructure or, you know, large scale projects that the town should be interested in engaging in that would need to be, you know, financed some way through bond issues or something similar. And so it's important for us to know what the headroom is between, you know, the gap between existing commitments, which is around five point six percent, and how far you could go without being penalized for going further than that. And that's ten percent.
Well, is this police building, is this consultant's report out?
No, it's underway right now. This has been, Gary's probably the best person maybe to talk about how long has it been kind of a.
Well, Joe too.
Joe and Joe maybe too. It's been sort of on a merry-go-round here.
The police fire town twenty years ago.
It's been a while.
Yeah, what, twenty years.
Right.
I mean, Western Avenue was early, you know, up there by.
Right.
By exit two, yeah, yeah. I mean, it's been, been kicked around for a long time. This is the third.
I think this is the third version, kind of, yeah.
We must have almost as much in paying people to tell us where we should put it as what we could have poured the foundation for.
And is there state and federal funds for any of this or do we have to bear the cost of this?
I'm sure there are some sources, but I don't think they would be major.
And it's like, like Sue said before about, you know, other projects, you know, there's, there's, if there is some federal money and if there is some state money, then there's local money and we're having a hard time hitting the local part of the transportation money, you know. And in this, it would probably be flipped, right, at the, at the least.
Yeah, I think that's probably fair.
Well, it just seems like another thing where, because of the storm and everything else, this could be postponed yet again.
At the FEMA Center, when they opened over there, Nelson, then one of the first things the, the head guy there said was, somebody asked him, well, what about the, because some, you remember the storm had just occurred, something else, and there were other things that were still reeling from, and someone asked him, well, what about those? And he says, those will probably wait a while. And somebody said, well, how long? And they said, well, indefinitely. And, you know, he didn't even flinch to say that, so.
So it seems like there's two ways that we can look at this. We can look at it from a standpoint of, we have all these numbers, how can we cut costs? Or how can we, how can we implement things that will make the town more money? Is that fair to say?
I think that, I think as, as far as the town plan and its ability to, to kind of set up policy or provide direction for the town, I think that it's not the planning commission's job to cut or to, you know, make those hard decisions per se. I think that if, if there's a better process that can be used, I mean, we've already made commitments into the town plan, in the town plan to improve biking and logging. So that maybe is going to take a shift in resources if that's really going to happen. It probably will take a shift in resources. So is there a way that we can better use the capital plan to move projects forward or to, to plan projects better? I mean, does the capital plan need more detail? Do we need to?
So the town plan's going to make just a few recommendations that we all really want. And then in discussions with the select board, it'll be hashed out as to whether there's any resources for these things that we want.
Right, I think, I think the best way to characterize the current set of municipal services and facilities is that as each budget year goes by, I think that the senior staff of the town present to the select board a picture that says the current level of services are not readily sustainable in terms of the revenue that comes into, the taxes that come in to pay for them. So you can either think about increasing the revenue or think about shrinking the set of services or some combination of both. And that's pretty much what the budgetary process is every year. And it's, I don't want to mischaracterize it, but what I'd say is that we're talking about things very much at the margin. So every item is picked over and every, every line item is examined excruciatingly carefully. But it's all about trying to keep the expenditures really low and they've been, and they've been stable for the last two years, which is actually fairly good, given the number of variables that can, that can push you off. But the revenues have also been pretty stable. There's been some slight growth in revenue this year, which is good, but not huge. And so the challenge is, is that we're in this, that was the link back to that kind of description about the population. It's all about maintaining the current set. And so eventually over time, that current set of buildings and services are going to fall into, you know, really severe need for replacement or they'll become, you know, some new set of services will be expected with new costs associated with it. So we don't have, we don't have the growth, and we don't have the growth or change in population or its behaviors to really show us the way forward. So and I guess the example I'm trying to draw here is if we were in a community that had real rapid population growth and lots of elementary school aged kids turning up, then we'd know that what we needed to do is to make sure that there were more parks and, or at least the parks were well looked after and that maybe the school budget would be the thing that would be growing because they'd be building new schools. But right now, we're, you know, Brattleboro has been in this kind of holding pattern for a very, very long time.
And it's, it's decision time right now and that's part of the town plan. I assume that we're, we're saying, well, we're in this holding pattern and our population isn't increasing. Are, are we, are we building this plan to try to increase the population or attract younger people or people with kids or?
I think that the overall scope of the plan is to, is to encourage population growth and have that be of working at, you know, working in family making age.
Doesn't seem like that's the mentality though, because a lot of our discussions are sort of like, well, that's just how it's been for a while, which is fine if that's what we want to stay like, but, you know, that there's a lot of implications.
I think the implications of staying the same and not as well understood as perhaps they should be, because staying the same means that we're sort of aging in place and that's not, that's got costs associated with it and it has revenue implication, negative revenue implications as well. So it's, so, but in terms of what the town plan can do, I think that what I'm trying to make sure that you understand is, is that there's sort of this limited headroom between existing commitments and how much more you get add on, assuming a completely benign kind of political process, right? So all I'm trying to say is, is that there's not a lot of headroom necessarily between the commitments that we've already made in the past and what we could make in the future for a considerable period of time. So any, any commitment to add things to the budget in the town plan should be made in that, you know, with people knowing that. And so it's much more a point of what Sue, the point that Sue was making, which is it might be about reranking priorities more than adding new things on. And that's challenging in its own right, but it probably is useful to have that discussion. And then ultimately, the last part would be, we'll look at capital commitments, long term capital commitments that the town makes, use the town plan as a process to inform that decision making a little bit better, because I think to some extent, in the past, they've been pretty separate vehicles. There's not, there's not been a lot of exchange between the town plan and the people who make decisions about the capital plan. And that's exacerbated by the fact that we don't actually add a whole lot of new capital. So it's, if you're always just saying, forget it, no, I don't want to add anything new to the capital plan, after a while, people give up suggesting things to add to the capital plan. But sooner or later, somebody might want an indoor swimming pool or something and, you know, that could be a perfectly viable, you know, decision for the community to make on a certain level and there should be a mechanism there that the planning commission is part of that actually identifies what their need is, who does it benefit, what the costs would be, and then how does the town make that project not just okay, but as good as it can be?
And how does the town prioritize, you know? I mean, we, because, because what is in the plan is, I mean, I think what we, some of what we have tried to put in the plan is quality of life, you know? And an example that, you know, we were talking about preparation for this meeting was, you know, let's say we put now, you know, ninety percent of transportation money into the roads and ten percent into the sidewalks, you know? And if we're saying that bike ped is a big deal, which has been right across the board, what we have said, then maybe we need to find a way to not just say that in the town plan, but to try to implement that in the capital plan to say, instead of ten percent, it's going to be fifteen percent or it's going to be eighteen percent or something like that. And so, you know, it's a, it's a touchy subject because everybody in town government has their, their areas and, you know, and especially since funding is so hard to come by, those areas are going to be fairly well, you know, guarded, I guess you might say. I don't, I don't mean that in a pejorative way either. I just mean, you know, people are, have a lot of money, so.
So what are ways that, we don't have a lot of money and that's, that's, that's clear, but right now, when you look at, part of the reason that, that towns are, one way to improve the financial situation would be to utilize existing resources, right? A lot of buildings in town that, you know, for example, Gibson-Aiken Center, what, what's going on there right now? Women's basketball, actually, but.
Right now, I'd say, right.
You know, I, I look at all of these resources, even, even the high school, the library, all of these places that they're being heated and cooled regardless of, well, heated for the most part, regardless if, if no one is there. I mean, I don't know what the, what the schedule's like for the Gibson-Aiken Center, the, the River Garden, another good example of pretty nice space that with a couple tweaks, you could make that space accommodate a wide variety of people during different times of the day, during all times of the week and all times of the year. So trying to address some of the financial issues with overlapping stuff that's already in place, there's, there's a girl who is in charge of event planning at, at the River Garden. I don't know how many hours a week she is, but why couldn't the town hire somebody like that, that would do, that has a list of, of places that all of these municipal buildings that, that have space that other people can be using, that they could rent out per square foot, per event, per hour, whatever. There's lots of needs. Weddings are one. People are going out of town. Tourists are not coming to Brattleboro to do that because this kind of facility doesn't exist. Talk about tax dollars, that's fifty to two hundred people coming into town, staying two nights, rehearsal dinners, food and shopping. I mean, that's, you know, one, just one example of what we're sort of missing out on right now as far as growing our, our tax base.
Well, I, I think we need to separate municipal from economic development. I mean, some of these things are economic development.
They are, but these, these buildings are, there, there's lots of space in town that's, that's not, it's, it's facilitating that need and because people aren't talking, not that they're not talking, a resource doesn't exist, whether that's a person or some kind of a, a, a grand list of places that people can rent, I mean, for conferences, for work stuff. I mean, I get emails once a month for somebody looking for a place to have twenty-five people to do a workshop. I don't know, Marble College, maybe?
That's where we go.
Yeah, it's the only place in town.
Unless we get Jews, a lot.
Yeah, and, and that, that's fine, but who says that, you know, Burlington is the nearest conference center around here? I mean, that, that's another, I feel like there's lots of opportunities with a little bit of thought to, to tap into needs that we're not currently tapping into. And that's utilizing municipal buildings and other buildings.
Yeah, well, I don't know where the politics of all that comes in because I've said before, I don't know what chapter we were working on, but again, it had to do with utilizing schools and community buildings for more.
Yeah.
Well, schools.
But, but the schools are separate and the feedback that you get from the schools is that they're, they're utilized to their maximum at, at this point. But I drive by all those schools at any different times of the evenings and they're all closed up, you know? So I, I mean, I agree theoretically with what you're saying, how to make that happen.
And a lot of times it's because.
The politics of that is a whole different thing.
Whether it's the politics or somebody not, you know, they're, they're paid to do their, their amount of time per week and do they want to do this extra endeavor? Probably not. Somebody's probably going to have to be hired to do something.
Well, you have to, if you, like, I've rented Oak Grove School for events and you have to pay. You pay for the janitor, whoever it is, to be there, but people probably just, maybe it's just a, a progress, a process of people don't know that they can rent out the school buildings. I have no idea where that comes into me.
Well, doesn't Build a Better Brattleboro do a lot of this type of work?
It does for the River Garden.
They rent out the River Garden.
They rent out a lot.
Yeah, they do. That's a major source of revenue for them.
And, but I think. And the museum does a lot of that.
Yep, the museum does that too.
I think what I'm hearing is we need to figure out either a policy or an action step to kind of.
Maximize.
Look at innovative ways to raise revenue for the town.
Right.
Even use that as an example.
I mean, the action step to me would be put it online, put it in the newspaper, have a list of seven places with a, a floor plan or something.
Right, yes, on a real basis.
Just say, this is great for weddings, conferences, whatever, give people a, a resource.
Yep.
I think this came in the recommendation that the consultant made to the downtown people. I remember when Andrea came here to present to us, one of the recommendations was better web presence instead of having.
Yeah.
Two to three different web presence for the town was to coordinate them and have different, and to kind of upgrade and get different apps and that thing. And I, and I, I imagine they're working on that.
They are. It, it doesn't, I don't think we mentioned the webpage or a web presence in this chapter, but.
No, but you had it as a topic.
Yeah, I think we should, right. I think that that's something that we need to devote some attention to and perhaps, I mean, so that would, so for me, that would represent a shift in services. So if you could go back to the nineteen eighties in our office, there was probably some kind of monster computer with an orange screen and black type on it, or you could flip it around and have orange type on a black screen. And probably not very many people in the office able to actually use it. And lots of poorly written notes stuck in manila folders everywhere and that's how it was done. And we've, you know, just like everyone else, completely changed the way we do our work. We're still struggling. So for instance, a large project for our office would be to computerize, effectively computerize the, the files, like scan all those files and all those file cabinets and have it. the files, like scan all those files and all those file cabinets, and have it searchable. And so that you could search it from home just as easily as come to the office, right? That's a massively expensive project that.
Sure is.
That we're not entertaining anytime soon. But if you think about the shift, so there's a shift in expectation, as, as time goes by, more and more people are going to expect that level of service from our kind of office. And already, more and more people expect a certain level of service when they visit the municipal webpage, or try and identify or find information about Brattleboro online. And the town and related kind of entities like BAB haven't been able to find the resources to dedicate to that, to make that a very inviting and highly effective and efficient experience. The other one that I would use, which is probably more of an example for our office again, is the implementation of GIS and, and GPS, so that most of our backroom stuff is handled using a GIS system, which again, in bigger communities, is the way it's increasingly organized. It's massively expensive, the outcomes are hugely positive for everybody. It's much more efficient, but you've got to spend the money upfront to do it, so.
So what, Rod, on something like that, for instance, I mean, that's the sort of project, kind of what we're talking about, right?
Yep.
That if, if you could identify, if we could make a decision as a town, that this is a project that has a payback of X number of years.
Right.
And, and in the end, after it's done, it makes for a, a more growing, you know, higher quality of life and, and a bunch of other positive.
Right.
Things, you know, I, I think that's the sort of thing where, you know, identifying projects like that, where the net is a positive.
Right.
And it, and it, net doesn't cost the town, it actually makes the town money. I mean, I feel like that's the sort of thing that, you know, I don't know how many projects like that there are. There's probably more than we think, but.
Is there a way to, to not complicate things so much? I mean, as far as all these little projects, there are lots of little things. I feel like if, again, with a little bit of thought, you know, rather than saying, oh, you know, only website, why not just put another button on the town website and say rentable space? I mean, as a, as a, as a baby step.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
Yeah. I think.
I mean, it gets two separate issues. I mean, I think something like that, yeah, that could be done easily, it could be done quickly.
I think the observation from the consultant that BAB used on the downtown was that, and BAB have begun working on it, and surprise, surprise, it turns out weird complicated things. So for instance, we don't have nine-one-one addresses for parking lots. And so therefore, we don't have an easy address to enter into the Google map, so that if you were trying to find your way around town using a smartphone, that it would show all parking lots. So that if you were at one parking lot and you couldn't, you know, find a space there, how would you get to the next one? So there's just some real basic elements, and it's just sort of interesting what it turns up. But I guess the, what I'm trying to illustrate here is, is that there's a huge need, not just for the municipality, but for the Chamber of Commerce and for BAB and other related organizations to really hop up the web presence. And what that entails is money and, you know, for design and, and having somebody who really understands the architecture of a webpage and what you're trying to do, knows what they're doing, and then also service space and all that. I mean, there's, there's costs associated with doing it, is what I'd say.
What percentage of the town budget is municipal facilities and services?
Does this thing from salaries, or how do you want to break that out?
Well, I mean, this, you know, basically, what is the budget for all these things that I'm looking at here? Municipal center, uh...
That's con. It's not.
It's probably down by like a parking.
Right.
I mean, this, it seems like this is like eighty percent of the budget.
Oh, the general fund, yes.
I mean, if you include police and, I mean, if, because if you, if you look at things like police, right, you got a building.
Yep.
But there's all the services that happen in that building, so you can't have the services without the building.
Right.
So, I mean, this is like, this is like eighty or ninety percent of the budget, right? That's what we're talking about here.
Yep.
I have some general comments on, on this.
Yep. Yep.
Well, in light of what Rod was saying about current conditions and the aging population, maybe we want to expand that first bullet a little bit under current conditions, and then some way link that to a matching bullet that, as an action item of attracting a younger adult population. And then, if there's some way to further stress all the nice things that the library does.
Yes, I think, yes.
I mean, it's very, I mean, I see people waiting in line every morning to get in to the library.
Yes.
And it's incredibly helpful, and they do do a lot of programs.
You're saying under the current conditions?
Uh.
Or under the library section?
Bring that into some sort of summary section, maybe, just because it is so important. And if, if anyone wanted to cut the budget, it, it would be nice to have something in the plan that talks strongly about how useful it is.
Right.
Yeah, I've said that in the past a lot before you came.
Yeah. And then, on the maps, I think it would make more sense to have the water and sewer on one map and all the electrical facilities on the other, because you have the three pace power, power poles on the one map, but then you also have the substations and the transmission lines.
On the other?
On the other. So if you put all electric on one and water and sewer on the other, it might be better.
Right.
And I also think that we should think about the water and sewer service areas in terms of promoting growth in areas where there's water and sewer.
Right.
In terms of carrying over to the land use discussion.
I have a question about the waste. Where are we here? Municipal, there's municipal waste is in here somewhere, right?
Yeah, wastewater treatment, this is on page five.
Yeah, public water supply, electric, solid waste and recycling. So we have that, that place up, when you go up Putney Road and around the traffic circle and up, that's a, that's a county facility, right?
No, it's a district.
Larger than a county.
Okay, who, who pays for it? That's really the question I.
We do. There are.
We pay for all of it, or we pay for?
Subscriber towns.
Subscriber towns, okay. So, so there's the, there's the industrial compost thing, you can go and put your compost in there.
Yep.
So is that, is that residential only? I mean, could somebody go around with a truck and collect a whole bunch of compost and go bring it up there, or is that not?
The, the bin with the Holstein paint job?
Yeah.
That's for residential use only.
So if, if somebody had a truck and went around and collected?
They'd have to come to some other kind of an arrangement, I think. I think.
I think there is a.
There is, I think you could, I mean.
Looking at doing it.
Right. Triple T was probably, yeah.
We're talking about doing that.
I mean, here's, here's the reason I ask. If we pay by the ton to throw stuff away, and eighty percent of the stuff we throw away could go in industrial compost, can we just move it into there? And let it be industrial composted, which would be better for the environment and save us a lot of money?
Um, it's conceivable. I don't know the answer to that question exactly. What I do know is that that was the kind of complicated debate that went on around recycling and the whole thing, so.
So.
And throw, and.
Pay you.
Pay your throw, throw your, pay your throw. Just want to get that around, around the right way.
Think they want Triple T just try and put a compost facility over in Winchester, and that failed.
Yes.
Yes. Right. So there's limits, there's, I would say there's sort of regional limits to the ability to handle industrial scale compost.
I think part of it is compost facility is one of those fanciful terms that when township sees it coming, they dock. I, I think it's.
Because it smells?
Probably. Well, I, I'm not sure exactly what the single or multiple reasons are, but I'm sure there's quite a few, because they seem to be met with quite a bit of opposition wherever they try to land, kind of like skate parks.
What was, no comment. What was the thing you guys were telling me about with the tilapia?
Oh, common harvest.
Old Prairie Road, that's in process.
Yeah. So is there any possibility of that expanding? And what are the types of, types of products that go into that to help maintain or to be able to grow something like that?
There's a, products were put out by that group from last year when they came and flipped the switch, they had carbon harvests. And they're supposed to put out twenty thousand tons annually of tilapia and thirty thousand tons annually of vegetables. And when the winter market is down, they're going to put their food into the food shelf.
Food bank.
Food bank. And then in the summer, when farmers are growing, they're just going to put it on the alternate market. And they're going to grow algae there also.
Yep, which would be a basis for biodiesel.
That's a closed-loop system.
Yep.
Yeah.
So I don't know.
So is that a net savings of money, or how does that affect our financial?
It's complicated.
They'll be successful and they'll pay taxes.
Right.
Okay, so that's good.
And this isn't their only location in the state, even, that they picked here.
They've got a collaboration with UVM, Marble College, and.
Duh.
Dartmouth, right. And they're going to make that place a model to teach farmers all over the Northeast how to create those small closed-loop systems on their own individual farms.
Who's doing this?
Carbon harvest.
Carbon harvest.
Yep. So I don't think it has a, so the two things is, I think that they're limited by the site to some extent in terms of expansion. And one of the inputs for their system is the methane given off by the old landfill.
Yeah, the what?
The methane.
The methane, methane. They've rejuvenated the system that was sold to the town by Stub twenty-some-odd years ago for a million dollars. And it promptly found a disrepair, and then they've taken it over and they've got it going again.
Right. So that, that will be the heat given off. Right now, they're generating electricity and selling that onto the grid from, how do you say, methane?
How do you Yankees say it?
Something like that. And so then that gives off surplus heat, and that, that would be that heat that heats the greenhouse. So, yeah. But I don't, I, I think there's limits to that site. And I, what I'd say, and I wasn't being ironic or sarcastic, the best thing we could hope for is that it, it's stable, you know, becomes a successful business.
Yeah.
But were there other comments that people had on anything?
Did you get all the ones you wanted?
Yeah.
I have, I have, I just have a question that, so under electric, I don't, I don't know if they do this, I don't know if, is, if it's a state rule or what. In Massachusetts, some towns have municipal electric utility rather than, you know, giant mega conglomerate. We don't have those here in Vermont, do we?
I think there was a disaster about that in Burlington.
But there are some small towns that have their own electric system.
Okay.
Not a lot, but.
And, and would that make sense for us to do as part of our becoming?
Not based on what happened in Burlington.
Okay, what about, you know, what happened in Burlington?
Side conversation, not.
Yeah.
Okay, so can we look at the successful ones around the country and say, this is how we want to do it?
We could.
And, and would that be good or bad for us, or?
Or I, I, what is it, what is it that you'd like us to do? Investigate whether the, being exposed to kind of market rates or whatever it is for.
Yeah.
Electricity are having a negative impact on growth?
As, as part of, as part of our, I think as a community, there seems to be an agreement that we want to keep our money local as much as possible. And municipal systems that exist that I've experienced in Massachusetts anyhow, the money goes into the system and it stays local. And instead of paying off dividends to investors, dividends go back into the community to continue to rebuild infrastructure, et cetera.
Okay.
And it keeps the money floating inside the community and for, you know, in the good of the system and the community, as much as you control your own electrical system, which obviously they're all interdependent. I mean, you're never going to be a completely independent, just create your own energy source, I guess.
Well, we have a large electrical generating facility that's local, and nobody seems to want it.
Right.
Yeah, so it's possibly why people haven't spent a whole lot of time really exploring that one. But, so.
I was just curious if the rules, like, I don't want to start this whole discussion about we should do that. I'm just curious what, if, so the rules in Vermont are, that could happen.
Yes.
If somebody like me was motivated enough to start the discussion and make it happen.
It's possible that you could do it under the law.
Got it.
And so, yeah, it's, it's worth exploring.
Okay.
Yep.
That was just a question about the rules.
Great, yep.
I really liked your idea of putting something in here about, we should do something to attract younger people. I mean, I guess this probably starts stepping into the economic development discussion.
Yep. But I believe we should do something a lot more bold, actually. Set some goal for
a number of jobs that we want to create. Because it feels like we talk a lot about all the reasons why we can't do things. And until we do something bold, it doesn't, it gives the select board an excuse to keep doing the same thing over and over again, and to keep us continually static or stable, depending on the word you want to use. And we're not going to get out of static and stable unless we actually put something out there and put the gauntlet down.
Yeah.
Okay.
So let's say that we want to, you know, a five-year goal of creating five hundred jobs, or whatever the numbers are. Put something in there that actually says something for the select board to argue for or against.
Rod, remember the meeting that you convened to discuss exactly this topic in your office about economic development with startup.
Yes.
Commerce and things like that. What were the conclusions there? Think we could resurrect that?
Well, let me just say.
Basically, that it's tough.
We're going to talk about economic development in just a couple of minutes. And let's just finish this up and go to that.
Yep, okay. And I'll try and.
Many.
I'm trying to drag it out of my memory.
I just want to, I just want to bring us back a little bit to the whole notion of the capital plan and the town plan and being coordinated and synchronized. And I'm not saying that it's an easy thing. And I'm not saying that there are ways that these things have been done for years and years and years that would be counter to that. But I am saying that if we're going to talk about priorities such as sidewalks, that there needs to be a forum, or there needs to be a way, I think, to prioritize sidewalks, for example, or any other infrastructure projects, maintenance or, you know, capital improvement, that people have expressed the desire to have happen. And there really isn't a place to go to talk about that kind of stuff, you know? There really is not.
Right.
You know, and I, we were talking about it before, and I thought, you know, maybe something like the Traffic Safety Committee could become a, the Road and Sidewalk Committee or something like that, you know? But some, someplace where people that are interested, they, they don't have to join the Budget Committee. They could join something that says, you know, this is, this is a, a committee of citizens working with the Public Works Department, working with the town departments, that will help to shape the priorities of, of the town, how we spend our money, you know? So that's, that's my pitch.
Well, that's a great idea, because there is a great disconnect between sort of capital plan, budget, and.
Right.
And the reality out there, and, and what we put in the town plan. And when all these people come saying we want more bike and pedestrian stuff, and we've said this before, where do you go? And where does, because the Public Works has their budget, they have their, their priorities. And how do, it's not to discount them in any way, but to say that the citizens also have some say in how, how does that interface?
Well, I mean, and, and, you know, you definitely want to put the emphasis on cooperation.
Yes, oh, definitely.
Because people in the departments are the experts at how these things run and everything. But, you know, I think people would have a lot more investment in, in the infrastructure if we had a, a voice or a say in what, what could happen next. And, you know, there's also volunteer opportunities, like, you know, what you guys did at Exit One, you know?
Yeah.
You know, when you think about a project like that.
Totally citizen-driven.
Yeah, citizen-driven, it can augment what the town can do. And, you know. Yeah, citizen-driven. It can augment what the town can do. And, you know, as funds are more scarce, those kind of opportunities are things we have to look for. Sort of similar to what Timberley, what you were talking about, you know? That little things that can be done, but that, the, the power of those little things can get magnified if it's in conjunction with what the town is doing.
I feel like there should be somebody, I, I don't know if a committee would really work, but like a person hired, an efficiency manager who just does, goes around all of the different services and, and facilities and, and looks at, I don't know, looks at everything and says, you guys are spending 20 hours, you know, typing in all of this data when you could just scan it and have it translated for you in 10 minutes with an iPad. You know, I mean, I'm just saying. It's just, you know what I mean? And, and for that, that investment.
I'm cool with that. I'd like.
Oh, I bet you, yeah, I bet you guys were going to do it all the time. I mean, but who's, I don't know. It just seems like with
Yep.
that upfront investment of hiring someone to do that.
Right.
I don't know.
Okay, just on Gary's point alone, um, the budget for sidewalk is about $400,000 a year.
It's about what?
Four hundred thousand dollars a year. And there are 35 miles of sidewalk in town. And it's about $71 a foot to construct sidewalk or to, and a lot of our sidewalk would probably fall into the category of needing to be totally redone. So they could chew about a mile a year on the current budget. So to think of this in a long-term capital kind of ways, it would take us 35 years to totally replace our existing sidewalks.
And in 35 years, the one we just fixed yesterday would probably need to be redone.
Right. And it doesn't take into account variations like the widest up.
Yeah.
Right. Downtown or whatever. So just to put it in perspective, that's kind of the schedule that we're on.
All the more reason that at least we all understand
Right.
what, why what gets done gets done, you know?
Right.
We can at least feel like we understand it and perhaps when there's a decision to be made,
Right.
there's more input rather than, than less, you know?
Right.
I'm not saying that anybody's doing a bad job. I'm just saying, you know, it would be good as a town for everybody to feel invested in it because we are investing in it.
Right.
So I said five minutes, that's seven minutes. Let's go on to economic development.
Yeah.
Liz's question, I think, is right on the floor.
I'm going to make this pretty quick for a couple of different reasons, nonetheless of which, um.
You have to go pick your sign up?
I think I just, just want to, hello?
What a segue.
Liz, maybe you can repeat your question. Well, there was this meeting assembled. That's right. For just this purpose. Gosh, I don't remember how long ago it was, but. I wasn't there because. It must have been like May or something like that. And I remember there was a man who works economic development for Marlboro College. And he had idea of starting a C space for upstarting companies at the space that Marlboro College had.
Oh, yes.
Oh, that was Caleb.
Caleb Clark.
Clark.
They did that.
They did do it.
It's up and running.
Well, there you go.
Yep.
That type of thing. And that's the type of, of discussion that we had to attract
Right.
new jobs and new types of jobs and people who were consultants and home businesses and.
That's right. It was a follow-up to the
The, the land use.
To the land use, to Roger's presentation at the museum.
Yes, yeah.
And so what it focused on was what are the needs, if you like, of the new kinds of employment? And Jim and Timberley could probably speak to this far more eloquently than I could. And you too, Liz, actually. So single proprietors or very small firms and how if it's your creative abilities that you're trading on, you don't need too much in terms of space. But what you do need are convivial places to meet potential clients and subcontractors and other people and to conduct your business. And you need access to high-speed internet and maybe places where you can, you know, brainstorm or problem solve with other people involved in similar sorts of things. In a sense that you're part of a broader cohort of people pursuing the same kinds of things.
And it was similar to what Kate Anderson was talking about in terms of art development.
Yes.
Because creative people aren't just artists. You know, there's like a broader discussion of creating an economic climate for the arts and creating an economic climate for all types of new business and e-commerce and everything else.
Right. So with that in mind, one of the, so, so I think that in a large part, what we concluded was that there was ways in which the town could be much more effective at facilitating these kinds of things. That there are other agencies active in town such as the Brattleboro Development Credit Corporation, BDCC, that could also have a role in those kinds of things. And that, um, between kind of the, if you like, the fabric or the bones of Brattleboro, which are fairly attractive, and it's still being affordable in many ways, that there are certain kinds of things such as access to short-term office space that you, you know, rent a desk and a high-speed internet connection by the hour or the, you know, week or whatever to facilitate those kinds of things. And just a way in which changing our attitude towards what constitutes work and what constitutes economic development would be beneficial there. And I think my response was that those were all really important things to do. Some of our challenges, I think, are literally getting a better sense of how many people actually do earn their living this way and what services and facilities they need and what the municipality, what the town could do for them in that regard. But also just a raw count. So one of the arguments that was made at that meeting was that we are missing a whole lot of economic activity that happens in town because our data sets don't capture that kind of economic activity. And I think that's, observation is apt on some levels. And we've tried very hard to kind of fill in the blanks and which gets to the other subtext for this chapter, which is almost the entire data set is at the level of the county. And I mean county, not even the region, which is not exactly the same thing. Because that's the way the data is collected. And so one of the challenges for having a very explicit and focused and local-level economic development strategy is that it's extremely difficult and/or expensive to collect data that's at the local level. So in other words, jobs can be, being created and lost here sort of on a monthly or quarterly basis and it's very difficult for us to ascertain what's really going on. The big ones, you know, if a store shuts like on Depot or, or something like that, is a very obvious, you know, um, outcome. I mean, even when Bigford shut, that attracted first, you know, front-page news. But many jobs get created and many people are working here that don't get front-page articles. And it, it's just difficult to figure out what's really going on if we're totally dependent on data that's collected at the county level. The last part I want to, comment I want to make about the data is, which is also very important for Brattleboro, more so than other parts of Vermont. Because we're on 91 and because we're in the bottom right-hand corner of the state, in terms of labor market, just like in labor markets and retail markets and capital, any kind of market that you can think of, for Brattleboro is not really confined by the Brattleboro boundaries. So housing, employment, um, food, retail, you know, any kind of market that you can think of. People with fairly basic means have the ability to purchase it here or work here or work outside the state. So you could live here and work in New Hampshire or Massachusetts or vice versa. And there's a lot of that going on, which complicates the data picture dramatically. And so that's a big issue when we're trying to actually put together a economic development strategy. And the last part that I want to leave you with, which is sort of more of a challenge than anything else. For many, many, many years, everyone has engaged and is kind of hand-wringing about the tax profile of New Hampshire versus the tax profile of Vermont and point out that there's no income tax and no sales tax in New Hampshire, which encourages people to, to shop there. And that's why there's more prosperity apparent in New Hampshire than there is here. And my response to that is contradictory and a little bit nuanced, but what I basically say is, is if that Cheshire County, which is where Keene is in New Hampshire, is growing and it is and prospering, then there's ways in which Brattleboro should actually try and figure out how to actually complement that and work with that. And we shouldn't be concerned that we're losing jobs or businesses to New Hampshire on any one day. And we would feel, I think, less unnerved by that if we're also better aware of how many people and job, you know, how many people visit Brattleboro from New Hampshire to access certain kinds of services or unique experiences or whatever in Brattleboro and how we could actually complement that growth pattern. And so what we should be doing is looking for patterns of, you know, ways in which we can complement or add on to that and actually ride those coattails of the economic growth that's present in Cheshire County and in Keene in particular, rather than seeing ourselves totally in competition with it. Because most of us are in a situation where we could go to, we could go there to shop or here. And intuitively, we know that people there can choose to eat out here or, you know, do certain things here or work here and, and live there. So we shouldn't see ourselves as, you know, blocked by the river and the state boundary. We should just see ourselves as part of a more prosperous and growing region which Cheshire County attitudinally has that view. So I want to start off the discussion tonight really quickly, just with this very basic scorecard here. This is a little, uh, scorecard put together by a fairly famous economist, Michael Porter from the Harvard Business School, who was asked by the National Governors Association at their winter meeting this year to, uh, to present kind of a very basic profile of each state. And this is what he came up with for Vermont. So very ba, very quickly, the, um, the left-hand column is the current position and the orange dot, let me go through the dots. So the top quintile, so if you're in the top 20% of US states, you get a bright green, you get a dark green dot. The light green, it's kind of limey green, is the second quintile. The third quintile is unfortunately almost exactly the same on, for you, but not for me. And then the lowest quintile is red. So in other words, if you get the green dot, the dark green dot, you're doing well. If you get the red dot, you're not doing so good. All right? And then he had four measures that he looked at. Prosperity, which is the current setting, productivity, labor mobilization, innovation, and so-called cluster strength. We'll get onto that in a second. So for, um, for Vermont, and so you've got the current position and then the trend, okay, showing whether you're improving or, or not improving. And the first thing to take away from this is that we are getting worse for labor mobilization, which means our ability to maintain our current workforce level. Okay, so this is, remember, this is for the whole state of Vermont. So basically what this picture is showing you, the snapshot, is that due to aging and for the most part, and other factors to do with our 16 through 65 age population, we've got, we've got, the, the outlook is not great in terms of the size of the labor force. In fact, it's shrinking. Okay? This would be more acute in Wyndham County than it is for the state as a whole in, argue in Brattleboro as part of that. Okay? Okay, um, so for the most part, the trend for prosperity is pretty strong going from the fourth quartile, quintile, I'm sorry, to, to the top quintile. I'm not quite sure.
How does he explain that?
I'm, I think this is also based on data before the big
Economic.
downturn. And, you know, I think that this one has been troubled in terms of the methodology.
It says 2011 at the bottom, isn't it?
Yeah, I know, but I don't think he would have had
Data.
recent enough data.
Well, but, but doesn't the trend, the top quartile trend, that means that we're, we're on an upswing that's equal to the upswing that's present in, in the top quartile of the states?
Yes. So as a performance measure, we're performing with the top quintile of other states.
But that could be a rate.
It's a rate, yes, it's a rate rather than, yeah.
Could be starting at a pretty low base, but the rate of, of the trending upward is trending at a rate that's the highest.
And maybe he looks at those more, the data that hasn't been included in the past, the smaller entrepreneur, the private person, no?
No, it's a basic, it's a percent of income set. So productivity, um, moving from the fourth quintile to the second. Innovation, um, we're in the top and that is represented by things such as the number of patents that are issued. And so it's an important guide to, for instance, the work that you might see going on in places like UPM and associated activities with that. Probably to some extent, even some leakage from Dartmouth College at Hanover as well, just on the basis of the startup businesses on the, on this side of the road. And then lastly, cluster strength, and we're in the lowest. This is, okay. A cluster is a group of businesses or, you know, rela, and in a related industry. So you can think about this in terms of clothing and textiles. So you'd have, so you can take Lowell, Massachusetts, or Milltown, an old-fashioned mill town as an example, back in the day, where you'd have plentiful labor supply from farm girls freed up because of mechanization happening on the farms. So they've got nothing to do on the farm, so they're sent off to the mills. When they get to the mills, you've got, um, large-scale industrialization happening at a really rapid rate. And so you've got lots of jobs changing and lots of technological innovation in terms of producing more with the same amount of resources. And you've got lots of different roles. So you could have merchants bringing the raw material like cotton or wool in. You could have people who were working for them. You could have the mill owners themselves and the girls basically that are working for them. You could have the mechanics fixing the machines. You could have the merchants then selling wholesale what they produce. You could have the insurance companies that specialize in insuring that industry and so on and so forth. So that's a cluster. There's always a thinking about clusters, which we won't get into. So another cluster would be, um, right here, we've got sort of a nascent cluster around optics, right? So we've got Omega and then Janus and then
Chroma.
Chroma. And at least one of those is a spin-off of the other. So Chroma is a spin-off of Delta. And then right back to the 1950s, what is now Full Flex, which makes diaper elastic, was in fact American optics. So there's been a long tradition of optics manufacturing and so, and design and so forth here.
Of course, book gross.
Right, for, for a long time. And then, so a cluster could be, um, a group of related occupations and group of related businesses that are codependent on each other that grow up over time. And it can be in odd kinds of things. So, um, that are not really clearly related necessarily. So for instance, if you go to the Midwest, you'll see that because of the preponderance of the auto industry from the early 1900s onwards, they got really good at bending metal, which is so, so there's also a lot of which is so, so there's also a lot of household appliance manufacturing. So you could work, you could work on an assembly line making a washing machine, or you could work on an assembly line making a car. There's not a huge, a lot of difference. And so machines that you use to make those parts are not hugely different. So you see a kind of a cluster emerging. So with that in mind, the leading clusters in Vermont are the education of knowledge, creation, analytical instruments, furniture, jewelry and precision metals, and power generation and transmission. That last one's pretty interesting because it's of course, almost entirely accounted for by the presence of
Vermont, yeah.
Vermont, yeah.
Yeah.
So and that's done by occupation category type, okay? So here, you've got what geeks like me love, which is location quotients. So the line, this bright yellow, is a location quotient above one, which means that what is present here is stronger than the national average. The location quotient of greater than two is this color here. And then the dark green is a location quotient greater than four. So the location quotient measures the state's share or in cluster employment relative to its overall share of US unemployment. So location quotient of one indicates an above-average employment share in a cluster. So in other words,
Could you move to this side so she can get that on the screen for the TV audience to see also? There you go.
They're not going to get anything. It's, look at it. We could turn on the light, that might improve things a little bit.
People at home have forty-six inch televisions.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, so what you see here is the same information contained on that last page conveyed by these little bubbles. Of course implying clusters, all right? And you'll see, for instance, the presence of aerospace engines down the bottom here. Well, we've got at least two machine toolmakers that make component parts for GE and Pratt &amp; Whitney here because they're, and Sokorski because they're down ninety-one. So actually we do, so we do have those kinds of links. And but this is for the entire state of Vermont, remember, okay?
Is there an agriculture one in there? I can't, I can't read them, right?
Agricultural products is up here and we are less than the value of one. What you, remember, when you're doing that, we're comparing agricultural products here against agricultural products in somewhere like Nebraska.
Yeah, yeah, Midwest, yeah.
Right? So, you know, Chicago or Minneapolis, you know, Minnesota or something like that. So that's actually pretty big. Okay. This doesn't come out too, too well. This slide is from work that the Southeast Vermont Economic Development Strategy Team has been working on with a bunch of consultants. And so on the basis of that, those two slides of information that I just produced for you there from Porter's report. These, the economic and community assets that they've identified as existing in Wyndham County strongly. So precision technology-driven manufacturing. So that's the example that I gave before of GS Precision and a couple of machine tool shops that produce a large number of, you know, production components for other equipment.
That's optics too, isn't it?
Yes, it would also, that would also include Delta and so that also includes, yeah, it does, it includes optics as well. Logistics, which is warehousing and distribution. So CNS, UNFI in Chesterfield and a bunch of smaller places, but even down to UPS, okay? And that's a vital connection to the, basically to the presence of ninety-one. Global presence comes up strongly. The number of businesses that are actually engaged in global business transactions is pretty high. Second homeowners are a significant component here. The natural physical environment was for recreation and beauty and then the concentration of health and mental healthcare facilities in the county, which obviously reflects the presence of the retreat and a couple of hospitals as well. So the gaps that they identified were this absence of incubators, which is the kind of model that Clark, Caleb Clark was talking about. Redevelopment, which suggests that there's some major flaws in real estate markets that need to be addressed. Workforce development, broadband and telecom, rail, and post-Vermont Asian planning. So I thought that just by focusing on those kinds of issues and then trying to use another page from the same draft report, what they're thinking about is looking at those assets that we just identified, finding, so you'll see roughly each one of those assets that were on this side of the page turned into a, into a box, if you like, and then trying to identify niche markets that would go with such things. And it's pretty self-explanatory. The one thing that I'm interested about for us that folds back into some of our consideration of land use and other sections of the town plan are under the hospitality, retail and tourism button, if you like, over there. I don't think these things are necessarily related, but they sort of fall out that way. You'll notice down the bottom, you've got arts and cultural and then vibrant downtown retail. I think that there's a way in which the those two bullet items there need to be better understood in terms of being regarded as a given for a whole lot of the other things to really happen or to be nurtured. So in other words, we often end up reducing the consideration of the contribution of arts and culture in terms of tourist activity that's associated, that's directly associated with it. And I think that we often then think of our own downtown as the kind of premier retail space for the same kinds of things. For, you know, cultural product or local arts or, or something similar, even if it's, you know, a bakery like Amy's or something, right? But there's a way in which for people that we just talked about earlier, the absence or the lack of real growth and vibrancy with these, both these things would be limiting factors in terms of them deciding to move here in the first place. So the, what I'm trying to get at here is something a little bit complicated. There is an explicit economic development role that attaches to these things, but there's also another way in which if they're not present or they're not highly, you know, if they're not growing and prospering as fields of endeavor, then they have a sort of a secondary negative impact. And so there's a way in which it ends up helping the character of the community to be really expressed. And without it, it becomes more like any other community and therefore less obviously attractive. So what I'm trying to get at here is that a policy of economic development or, or policies in general that just focus on the vibrant downtown in terms of retail or arts and cultural activity as part of the retail, hospitality and tourism sector misses the point. That it's like an expectation that everybody who's living here all year round should be able to participate in those things meaningfully and it should be something meaningful in their lives. And I think that that is a little narrow there. So I just wanted to highlight that because it, it kind of makes the whole discussion a little bit more nuanced. The one real regional asset that the consultants who've been working with this group have identified is that we're actually sort of not quite off the map, but we're not actually marked out. So we're right here. And this kind of brown, blood red kind of color here stretches from Long Island Sound all the way up to here. And this is the so-called, well, it's called various things, but some people like to refer to it as the knowledge car or because of the very large number of
Colleges.
institutions of higher learning, including colleges, that from New Haven through to, hmm, just about here. So there, this underpins proposals to upgrade the railroad from New Haven through to ultimately St. Albans, so that it's a high-speed rail service connecting Western Massachusetts into Connecticut.
Like the Asila?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure if it's that high speed. That's really high speed for us. Just average for everybody else.
Clear that downtown intersection in no time, wouldn't it?
It might be worth catching it just to avoid the downtown intersection. So, yeah, so this is regarded as something that Brattleboro could really kind of glom onto, really map itself onto as sort of the upper reach of this whole region, which as you can see, under those circumstances would in fact straddle three, just three states, but take in around about twenty-eight million people and substantial amount of economic activity. And
And who are these people to the south who are barking on this twenty-first century regional economic development strategy?
Yeah.
I would characterize
Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, Capital Region Council, Redhams, Lingus.
I would characterize these people as disenfranchised in terms of the distribution of public resources from this location. And this is the capital of the Alawan. And so there's a way in which their need is their opportunity. And there's a fairly high level of crossover already, you know, ninety-one is doing, is doing this, right?
Yeah.
So it's, the other way of looking at it aside from the railroad track is that it's also the catchment area for ninety-one or almost entirely.
It was the river before it, you know?
Right, exactly. So it's a very old kind of geographical.
It's kind of disingenuous for them to mention MIT and Harvard.
I thought so too.
Yeah, really. Only if they have very deeply lost where it end up being included in here, because my recollection is that they're just above this dot and they don't like to move too far away from it.
Well, it is true. MIT and Harvard are putting a, a big technology center, a hundred and sixty employees in a brand new building in Holyoke.
Oh. Really?
But you're still, MIT and Harvard aren't quite there.
So what would you have to do wrong to end up there?
To end up in Holyoke? Well, they did it, they, apparently Holyoke got desperate enough that they were willing to put out bold things in their planning documents.
No, I mean, if you were working at MIT or Harvard, how would you end up being the one that was nominated to go to?
Oh, to go to Holyoke? I don't know. Yeah, that's a good question.
Holyoke has a pretty huge population of younger people.
Short straw.
They're making some serious
And immigrant populations too.
Well, I was going to say a, a population of young entrepreneurs, people starting businesses, attracting new businesses.
Right.
Downtown is making pretty
In Holyoke? Yeah.
Pretty significant effort.
It's got a lot more to do, but it has a lot of opportunity. So anyway, so I wanted to use that as one kind of background document and then very quickly sort of contrast that with the handout that we got from the conference that we went to, which is sort of a very basic explanation of what economic development is at the local level. And I think what this does best is represent the state's current effort at bringing economic development to the attention of planning commissions across the state. Because it's now incorporated into chapter one seventeen. And I think that they've begun to identify that this something of a, a gap or an absence in the current planning process for many Vermont municipalities when it comes to economic development. And then the other thing I've handed out for you is the very bare bones outline that we have for the current chapter. And if we've got, we could probably spend, you know, five or so minutes just talking. I'd be interested to hear from you folk. My concern, looking at the goals and the policies and actions that we've laid out in the chapter so far, I think it's good that we make a practical commitment to enhancing that commercial districts as a way of connecting the land use chapter with the economic development chapter and making it clear that that's something that's doable within the confines of the town plan. In other words, that's what we, that's what as a planning commission and as a group of people working on the town plan, that's what we can contribute. My bigger challenge is trying to think through ways in which we can facilitate other things happening when we don't really have too many tools at our disposal to make stuff happen. So the really important thing to take away from all these presentations is that the state's not dedicating resources, more resources to economic development than were dedicated before. They're trying to do a better job of coordinating those resources, but not growing those resources. And it's pretty clear that the coordination problems can be really challenging. But I guess the point that I'm trying to get across here is that in terms of large-scale job creation, so to go back to one of these images here, such as this one. If we're thinking of trying to grow some clusters here, the town itself, that is the municipality, the Big T town, has pretty limited resources that it can devote to that directly. What it can do is the role that it has pursued recently, which is facilitate new businesses moving to town and try and as efficiently as possible coordinate infrastructure and other needs so that the business can actually get established and then underwrite that business's application for a variety of grants. So
Can you explain how that happened, like for the yogurt?
Right. So the Commonwealth Dairy Business is the, is the case study here, is the case study example. So Brattleboro has what they call a new market tax credit zone. And that is based on census data that shows that, that for a rural state, a certain percentage of the population of that census tract are at eighty percent or below the median way, median household income. So in other words, there's a higher, the summary statement is that there's a higher percentage of people in poor households in this census tract than the state average by a significant margin. And so then that census tract becomes eligible to attract private investment where the investors reduce their tax liability by investing in what has to be a viable business, but that one that makes jobs or builds, or builds affordable housing and makes a significant economic development commitment to that location. And what it allows is for the new business or the, the housing project or whatever to receive upfront cash, which is a little bit different from the way things normally work, which is would be a sort of a reimbursement grant. So it's a way in which as a business entity, if you can identify the money that comes from your new market tax credit portion, you can use that to attract other investors because they know that they've got that commitment already established. So that's in fact, what the Commonwealth Dairy people undertook. They also took advantage of the Community Development Block Grant Program in Vermont called VCDP, Vermont Community Development Program. The town underwrote that application, so they received funds through that. And what I'd say is it was a pretty good example of all the relevant entities, you know, from the state on through, getting together and really trying to problem solve on a fairly frequent basis, like, you know, monthly, frequently, just to ensure that all the pieces of work that needed to be done could get done so that the business would, would take off.
And how many people are employed there now?
The initial expectation was twenty-five and then doubling almost to forty-five. And then they started closer to forty-five and then now at sixty-three. closer to 45 and then now at 63. And now running 24/7. And they have run into other problems that they didn't expect, including it's hard to get enough milk. So, the problems are associated with growth, not with shrinkage or, yeah, so it's actually a good story.
Where do the owners, are they, do they reside in Brattleboro?
At least part of the week, yeah.
As a second home?
Uh, kind of, yeah.
I mean, the job grade is great.
One of the principals lives here and to have young families in Massachusetts, but they house share here and there.
Well, doesn't that kind of defeat the purpose? You're giving somebody a huge tax break and then they're going to take their money back to another community and make jobs.
They made 63 jobs. And in the end, I mean, this goes back to that point that I was making before. To me, it doesn't really matter too much that they buy their car somewhere else or that they buy pizza somewhere else. In the end, it's that they chose here and it's viable as a business. I don't think it becomes that, it's not, that's not the issue where they live or what they do, it's that they've made 63 jobs that didn't exist beforehand.
But the point is to have a climate that's welcoming for businesses who want to locate here.
Sure. Yeah, and as a case study, I think it's a pretty good one. I mean, there were some pretty large-scale challenges associated with that startup, but it's also pretty successful in many ways. I think that it complements Grafton Cheese and it complements some other food...
Some of the maple, maple people, right?
Food and beverage makers. And so, you can begin to see a cluster beginning to, you know, potentially take off from there. So, one of the things, for instance, one of their byproducts, because most people in the United States like their yogurt to be either low-fat or no-fat, is that the cream that they carve off is the raw material for a cheesemaker who wants to make, you know, who wants to use that as an input into their cheese. So, there's ways in which what they don't want becomes something that somebody else really needs or really wants. And so, that's how you'd get the sort of blossoming more growth of a cluster.
Yeah, it seems like an interesting study. I mean, all the byproducts that are currently being wasted, is that a way to, if Brattleboro somehow goes to seek out new businesses, they say, hey, you know, we have a bunch of whey left over, what other businesses?
They have a lot of whey, way too much whey.
Well, I mean, that seems like an opportunity to be able to have a business, to entice a business to...
Yeah.
If there's a will, there's a way.
If there's, yeah. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
I think it's time to call it.
Yeah, I know.
I was gonna follow up, but I think Luc just taught me, all right?
She did.
I would say that's pretty much the motto for the economic development chapter. So, but as an example, you know, I think that's useful to look at. And then the other thing I think that's really important here that's an underlying concern, and we spent quite a bit of time talking to the person who now is working for the Wyndham Region Workforce Investment Board, the so-called WIB, David Alstead. And one of the challenges that local employers are having is that they are finding higher-level professional positions challenging to fill at certain institutions, so that would be the retreat, Marlborough College to some extent, World Learning. And that entry-level positions are also challenging to fill with adequately skilled and motivated workforce. So, the problem being that because of the wage disparity between this region, Wyndham County, and neighboring counties, and the kind of churning demographic that we've got going on, and Sue and I, when we did work at the high school, heard this directly from high school students, they leave to go to, the successful students leave to go to college, when they start building their lives, their career paths and personal relationships take them away from here rather than bring them back. And they're already conscious before they leave that one of the things that's absent is kind of a career path. And so, they can't, they're a little reluctant to come back, recognizing that the job that they got when they got back might be the job they keep for a really long time.
What types of jobs are they?
Well, these were high school kids, so they certainly didn't have a very clear sense of where they wanted to go. But the kinds of jobs that are frequently advertised here that are difficult to fill are in the medical and health services sector and in education. And then the semi-skilled production line, kind of fairly basic work. Their employers are commenting that the pool of candidates for those positions have got pretty profound challenges with basic commitment to work. And so, what I think that implies is that people who've got a good work ethic and good skills are finding that it's more rewarding to go somewhere else. So, if there's one dimension here that's difficult to kind of incorporate and it's way outside the scope of the plan because workforce training is not key to the town plan in many ways, it's that, but that, I think that's a fairly profound observation. And so, we have some language in this draft chapter about enhancing the, you know, the synergy or the links between the career center, the high school, the local labor market. And I think that it goes back to the point that was made by these consultants in their draft report and to some extent, the, oops, this one. So, this labor mobilization, the current line is pretty good. We're in the top quintile, but we're trending out, and I'd say it's more, that's more extreme here than it is in other parts of Vermont. And what that refers to is just the sort of, the number of jobs that are currently filled and the age profile of the people in those jobs means that as you look, as you go forward, those jobs are going to become vacant and it's not clear that they'd be filled by people currently residing in the town or in county. In other words, they'll either go unfilled or they'll be filled by somebody from somewhere else.
Or they're not going to stay here.
Or the job will relocate, I think is the single biggest implication of that. So, that's what I was trying to get at with that question about the suitability of the workforce at lower, you know, lower skill levels, that they're finding it really hard to fill fairly entry, you know, entry-level positions but with good workers.
I still wonder if, I have to just go back to the southwest Minnesota town and area that brought in wind power, and if we were on their planning commission or in their regional development planning, whatever, we might not have seen the potential for what came there if we were going by normal, whatever, all this research and typical thought patterns about job innovation. But what happened, which we know now after the fact, was this wind developer came there and created wind, community wind for the local people to buy into, and then in the end, they created a manufacturing to make the blades for the windmills and ended up employing 300 people, three shifts around the clock. And we took from an area that was very impoverished with most people leaving, again, young people leaving and created good technical trains, good-paying jobs. And it's like, how do you jump from all this great research and all this great planning when I don't, I can't believe that those people in that little town or that county used this kind of planning stuff when they went to...
Well, they did actually.
And all of a sudden, there was the wind guy and then it, and then somebody jumped...
Because it was a washing machine plant or whatever it was that shut down. So, it was...
Was it really that?
Yeah, it was a bunch of people that are really into bending metal, which is what the blades are...
Where it started from.
Well, and their asset map probably should win.
Yeah, they got a lot of it.
But anyways.
Well, I think that we haven't talked about the bear out in the chapter is what do we want to see? So, yeah, you know, this numbers are telling us one thing, but when we grow, what do we want it to be?
Right.
But I'm saying, like what Jimmy was saying about, maybe we need to just be really radical and put some, you know, things right out there, and so we stretch maybe to see what's coming along.
I agree. So, I think, for instance, we noticed before that this, for the whole state, is kind of low, but, you know, there's no necessary reason why we couldn't, you know, focus on that for the reasons that we just worked through.
Well, Michael Schuman, who came to this area to talk about small business, I mean, that's the area he pointed out, has a great aspect to grow in, big time.
And then, the other obvious ones that are somewhat present here that we could switch to different purposes could include the power generation and transmission. There's no particular reason why we just can't transition to a different source.
Yeah.
And then, the other one that comes up is distribution or transportation and logistics. It's low for the state, but it's strong here.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
What I'd say is, and glad that Sue brought it up, and it might be a good, slightly more upbeat point to end on, which is, I think that it's entirely plausible and reasonable that as a planning commission, you identify what you think could become successful clusters on the basis of the asset mapping, the work and stuff that's been done here and make it something of a stretch. So, that could be, for want of a better term, green jobs. I think that the same reasons that make us pretty good from a logistics standpoint that also really make us very good as a, again, going to this map here.
Yeah.
If this does come to fruition, and now there's also a sort of a competing project to improve the rail service from here to here, but that doesn't, that could be complementary. So, in other words, if we really worked on this as a destination for, you know, single person proprietorship, small businesses, people involved in the creative sector, by that I mean much more than the arts, I think, would include people who use their brain creatively all day as part of the creative sector. So, the same things that make us good for logistics, if that improves rail transportation and our connection to huge markets not very far away, then it makes us appealing in that regard as well. The one balancing off thing that we want to take back to the municipal services chapter is that we cannot underfund or deplete the quality of life measures, which would include open space, bike pit conditions and a variety of other things, because that will ultimately negatively impact those economic development strategies that we're trying to come up with.
Yeah, and actually, the Council on the Future Vermont actually backed you up on that, on what they found from the state.
I love when they do that.
And incubators is...
Yeah, right.
Some communities, I mean, that's what they've chosen to do, to build incubator centers. And I don't know the extent in which Caleb's is hitting it bed in keen. They have the Hannah Grimes Center, which is really going strong and serves as an incubator across many sectors. And I think it would behoove us to do a little research or have them do a presentation of some kind of...
Hannah Grimes? Yeah?
Yeah, we have, Putney, Transition Town Putney brought them there for the Putney Jobs Breakfast, and the woman came and spoke about all the different programs, and they use, they make, they utilize all the CEOs of all the businesses to provide resources and support for people, incubators, and they provide that, you know, the space if somebody wants to, you know, have a home business, but they need to have a business meeting, you can use their office. It's pretty impressive what they do.
Rod, can we have your slides so that we can ponder something radical from the...
The very own cluster?
I was going to attach it to the very own cluster, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay, well, the clock on the wall, so it's eight twenty-nine. Any last thoughts?
Ten points for Jimmy and our radical ideas.
I've made my rumbles, obviously.
Our next meeting is the 12th?
Yes, our next meeting is the 2nd.
And there will not be one on the 26th?
There will not, no.
Unless you'd really like one?
No, we're not, we're closed.
Yeah, no.
No, I think the town's closed and they don't allow us to...
We'll go to the wetstone.
You have a real strong feeling that will be closed.
Most to adjourn.
Did anyone pick up the town budget papers that I had?
Were there extra ones that could only go down that way?
To the things that were handed down, because Sue gave me one and I lost it.
By sitting here.
Yeah. Shocking.
That's a six-page budget.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I already did it. You missed it. I moved to adjourn.
Second, all in paper, please say aye. Aye. And let me just remind everyone that the sound that goes out to the public is still on.